Okay. So. Just to move. Who doesn't love some technical problems? Okay, good morning, everyone, and thank you very much for joining us. This is kind of a special webinar for me because first of all, full disclaimer, Igor is a friend and also used to be part of the Smart Density team, and we're very, very happy that, you know, the reason he left us was so meaningful and. Yeah, so Igor, welcome. I thought, you know, at first, oh, everyone would know you, but I think we need to take a moment, and if you please introduce yourself.
Thanks, Nama. Also, thanks to you and Smart Density, and just thank you for hosting me and offering to do this webinar. I really appreciate it. For folks who don't know me or aren't aware, my name is Igor. I'm running for city council in Spine of Fort York, and I'm an urban planner by trade, graduated from the University of Toronto a couple of years ago, and for the last 10 years have been doing quite a bit of community grassroots organizing on a range of different issues and topics that I'll get into as part of why I'm running. But it's wonderful to be with all you folks today, and I'm looking forward to this conversation.
So I want to start with a question that I personally, I just gotta get it out of the way. Why are you running? You know the industry, you know, you have a specific perspective working, you know, in the housing industry, and you're choosing willingly and freely to run for council. Why?
Thanks for that question, Nama. It's interesting because I get asked that quite a bit, and it always changes every day as I'm, you know, growing and learning from people and interacting with people. So I think today, what I've sort of come up with is for why I'm running, I think I've always been a little bit of a rule breaker, maybe not visibly, but in the background secretly working to sort of change the system from every angle that's possible, is how I would characterize it. And really, it comes down to, I really want to create impact and change people's lives, change people's lives in a very sort of real and meaningful way. As I mentioned, I've been doing volunteer and grassroots organizing for the last 10 years, if not more, on a variety of different issues that include housing, as Nama mentioned, transit, accessibility, public spaces, to economic development initiatives for small business owners. And I've created this change within, within community, and that's what I want to continue doing and hopefully at a larger scale, if I'm able to get elected on council. And I will just add one more quick point. I think my momentum for doing this work that I'm talking about, I think stems from my own lived experience with severe hearing loss and working with the disability community. It's a really big passion of mine. There's a saying amongst those involved that do this work, nothing for us without us. And I think this motto extends in a very real way to how we govern, run, and manage the public domain. And it's this passion within accessibility that's really sort of spearheading me towards all these other city building initiatives that we're going to be talking about and creating change for people.
And these are exactly the topics I wanted to cover. So they are very much, you know, housing, public realm, urban design oriented. So just for the sake of, you know, our audience and in case anyone is here, the first webinar with me, so this is our lens. This is the perspective where we are aiming to bring to the public. So Igor, the next kind of burning question that I'm really personally bothered with is the NIMBYs and NIMBYism in our, you know, society. And again, we are experiencing it from a very narrow perspective. I get that. But it seems like they really, NIMBYs really drive, are a driving force. And it's one of our concerns, and especially with the elections this year, they're going to be amplified, like really given the stage and getting them heard stronger than ever. So as someone who's running for council, what is your perspective? How do you balance, you know, these voices with honest concerns? I get that too. But at the same time, we know the effect they have on the housing industry.
Yeah, so it's a great question and one that I grapple with sort of all the time, and I'm sure most people do who do this work within the private sector and the public sector. I think, you know, we need to work with neighbors to create change, obviously. I think that change is inevitable, especially for a city that sort of wants and needs different types of things. But we also need to compromise and create creative solutions. So having said that, I know change is really hard and difficult for people. I sit across the, sit across people every day, trying to convince them to do something different. However, I think we need to work harder at really changing attitudes and behaviors when it comes to city building. I don't really think the status quo is enough. And, you know, you mentioned, you mentioned, you know, NIMBYism and what to sort of do around this sort of issue and how to tackle it. And I think an interesting story to highlight this is the post that Adam Schaeffer, I believe, is that right, Nama, made just recently on LinkedIn, which is highlighting a project that Smart Density and Adam were involved with, and the challenge of wanting to sort of do good, and how many times you sort of have to settle for less or you settle for average, and you aren't able to necessarily match your values with reality. And so he sort of, he outlined for folks who weren't able to read that LinkedIn story around, you know, a four-story gentle intensification, purpose-built apartment project, you know, it's within, I think, 250 meters of a subway, 40% affordable rents were initially proposed, and they weren't able to get this approved. And instead, we got six-market rent laneway homes, which is still a great, you know, still a great thing. However, it just sort of shows and illustrates the difficulty of moving the needle when it comes to gentle intensification, when it comes to housing, when it comes to affordable housing. It's very difficult to do. And I think what we really need to recognize is that change is inevitable, and I think we need to engage in this conversation at a deeper level. Another example I'll just bring up quickly is I had the opportunity to work with the City of Toronto and the Autonomous Vehicles Working Group a number of years ago and do some consulting work. And I read a book on the evolution of the car and the resistance of people to go from horse-drawn carriages to vehicles. And it was really quite fascinating, the challenges and barriers and attitudes that people had towards horse-drawn carriages and then shifting to vehicles. And I find that we are sort of, I think there's some similarities between change and the status quo, and what people don't want in their neighborhoods and what they do want, and how do we sort of do that similar sort of transition and shift into creating, you know, the city that we want? I think we really need to look at what type of city we're building and for who. And the decisions that we are making, you know, they aren't easily reversed, and they usually last for decades. So when we take limited land and we don't challenge our own biases and entrenched ideas, I think we're really robbing current and future generations of a livable city that may look very different from our own upbringing, and I think that is okay.
I want to tie your answer to my next topic, which is affordable housing or housing affordability in a general sense. Okay, just to make it clear, we know that NIMBYs affect that option, you know, directly. What else can be done to achieve greater affordability in WARTEN East Downtown, downtown core, I would say? What else are we missing?
So I mean, I think there's a multi-pronged approach to this. I mean, I think there's three items that I think I'll talk about. The first, I think, is we need to change what we can do as a right. You know, there's currently various restrictions and constraints within our official plan, within our zoning bylaws, that sort of prevent or hinder our ability to build housing in terms of things that Nama you're aware of and others on the, and others on the webinar are probably aware of in terms of shadows, angular planes, parking. I think we've moved in the right step in removing minimums there. So I think gentle density as a right, I think we need to explore further and try to figure out how do we make that happen. Nama and I both have sat on the Expanding Housing Options and Neighborhoods Committee, which really looks at how we can facilitate low-rise housing in residential neighborhoods by changing attitudes, behaviors, and really, and policy, really, to encourage more duplexes to low-rise walk-up apartments. Another statistic that folks may be aware of is 35% of our city's land use is neighborhoods, I believe. And so it's a real opportunity to look at the neighborhoods that we have and how do we leverage that and use that to create more affordable housing. Second, I think, is the Committee of Adjustment and some of our, I guess, institutions that we have within the city. I sat on the Committee of Adjustment, and my experience that I've had with that is, it's really unfortunate how many times great projects before us for approval, whether it be, you know, affordable housing or other types of housing. And because of the constraints of the system, of policy, of urban design, those projects aren't able to move forward or barely viable, or, you know, don't, aren't viable anymore, such as the example I listed earlier with Adam and how, you know, folks need to readjust and make, make changes to their initial plans. So I think we need to sort of look at the Committee of Adjustment, and I think there's currently review happening to see how we can improve that system. And I don't think it's, and I don't think necessarily the answer is, you know, not having community input and working with community. My, you know, entire portfolio of things that I do has to do with community and centering people first. I think it really, I think really the solution stems from a different venue for having these conversations and a different mechanism for engaging community and getting feedback in a really meaningful way, and figuring out how both sides can have this conversation. And I think the current system, the current setup and current policies don't allow for this to happen. And I think folks, you know, folks who come to Committee of Adjustments from resident associations and different neighbors, I think, would agree that the system is, you know, in some way broken a little bit. And obviously, the folks on, you know, that are bringing these proposals forward, I think, would also agree that it's broken. So I think we need to sort of change radically the way that we think about housing, the way that we look at input, the way that we look at community engagement, and come together really to recognize that there's both sides to this issue and to figure out how we can work together. And then the final point that I'll make is mainstream intensification. I think something very closely related to, I think, affordable housing and housing in general, and this is some work that Smart Density has also done on the mini mid-rise and really looking at, you know, how do you bring more housing to Main Street? I think looking at how we can increase gentle density on these main streets and, you know, encourage more people on these main streets where there's already amenities that are present there, there's already transit that's present there, there's already different public spaces that are close by, and seeing how we can increase density on those streets to support not only affordable housing and residence, but also to support, you know, local businesses, shops, and economic development that exists on those main streets, which we know is suffering right now after the pandemic.
Sorry. Okay, we'll get back to that Main Street aspect because I have a few following up questions. But next, I want to ask you about transit and accessibility. And I know it's a topic that is near and dear to your heart, so please make sure you share the background. But we live in downtown, and downtown should be, you know, the crown of good transit. So what is your vision?
And as folks know, there's multiple transit projects that are occurring across the city and the GTA. One of the few that are the most relevant to Spine of Fort York are Waterfront East, LRT extension that's taking place, and the Ontario Line. I think more transit is desperately needed in our city, especially as we build out the eastern part of the ward and of our city and the portlands. That will be a real hub for, you know, residents, businesses, and I think transit needs to follow rather quickly to facilitate everything that's happening in those areas. You know, there's obvious things that transit will be able to do, including like moving people more quickly across our city, especially as intensity and residential intensification takes place in those parts. There's the economic impact that's created by these type of projects, billions of dollars, you know, in cost savings, productivity, and time. Also, these type of transit infrastructure projects encourage a mode-share shift from the reliance on vehicles to transit. And some estimates from what I've read, you know, put this number as high as 44% decrease in automobile use. There's an increase in office spaces, new housing and new retail, as I mentioned. And then with this sort of mode-share shift to, you know, using other, using transit instead of vehicles, obviously, there's an environmental impact as well in terms of climate change and shifting, you know, carbon emissions. So I think speeding up these projects and allowing for these transit connections to make, to take place before the neighborhood becomes dependent on vehicles is really key, and something that I'm, you know, for and encourage. And then finally, I would say there's also an equity lens, as Nama mentions, not only accessibility and being able to create a more accessible city that people, regardless of what ability you have, are able to access, but also just allowing these connections to take place to our waterfront, to new, to new city amenities that are going to be created, including parks, including the Benway, including all these incredible public spaces that we have, which currently might not be accessible to everyone in our city because of the connections that exist and where these lines exist. So by increasing transit, increasing these connections, you allow for more people across our entire city to be able to access these incredible spaces in our city and to take part and to use them. And I think that's the ultimate goal. So yeah, that's what I would say around transit infrastructure in the ward and where we're headed.
And you know what they say about a city where, you know, the rich use, use public transit. Another topic that has been on the news last week is Ontario Place and falls within WARTEN. For those, I do know that we have some international people outside of Canada, so if you can kind of do like a quick recap on what's going on with Ontario Place, it is on the waterfront, on the Ontario Lake, and it's been a topic also from in the provincial elections was a hot topic. What is your, what is your vision for that place?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I've been doing quite a bit of, I've been talking a lot with, with community and going door to door, and also talking with a lot of organizations across our city and ones that are found within Spine of Fort York, and ones that sort of manage public spaces and are responsible for public spaces. And I think creating great public spaces is incredibly important to our city, and I think that we've done an incredible job in some instances, and in some other instances, we haven't in terms of creating that, what I call stickiness, in terms of attracting people to these spaces, keeping people there, and having people use those spaces in whatever means they want to. And I think the CNE is an interesting example of a large space that has existed for decades and decades, and there's currently proposals or current thinking to, you know, take that space and turn it from, you know, a public-facing, I would say, domain to more of a private ownership model that has, you know, private amenity uses on it. And I think I would, where I follow along that is, I think that all spaces sort of need, you know, eventually need revitalization, and, you know, things change. However, in terms of, you know, the spectrum of spaces and spaces, you know, needing to be revitalized or not. However, I will say, I personally think that the CNE in the space should remain within the public domain. And I think that we have some incredible activists, community organizers, professionals, urban planners, urban designers, architects, who I think have envisioned something entirely different for that space, where people from the public are able to engage in that space for free and interact with that space and contribute to the vitality of our city in a way that doesn't, doesn't overwhelm us with the privatization of that space. So I would encourage, and I fall on the side of keeping that space as public as possible, and introducing new and innovative and creative things to do with that space that I don't think are currently being sort of proposed or talked about when it comes to what's been put out there, you know, for visioning that space to look like.
And I want to move to some Q and A from the audience. So anyone else who wants to ask Igor a question, that now would be your time. Before we do so, I want to invite everyone on behalf of Igor at Igor's lunch party tonight. So we had a very good day to hosting. I'm posting right now in the chat, the event bright link. It's free, you just need to RSVP, and I will be there. So Igor, before we move to the Q and A, tell us how, how we can get involved, how we can help, what is your, you know, how we, how can we support you?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I would encourage folks to go to my website, www.igorsmarzick.ca. You can, you know, learn a little bit more about me. There's like an open letter that I have there. There'll be more information about me and the specific things that I've been involved with that'll be coming online in the next couple of days. Folks can sign up for my newsletter that will be sort of ramping up over the next couple of days and weeks, where you can learn more about the campaign if you're interested, and, you know, where I stand on certain issues or positions. I'm always open to chat with people. You can contact hello@igorsmarzick.ca, which is also on the website, and ask any question that you want. I'm fairly responsive and, you know, looking to engage with people and have conversations and talk with folks. Folks can volunteer for the campaign, and if you're able to, you can contribute to the campaign as well. So all that information is on my website. So yeah, I would encourage folks, if you're interested, get involved. And also, I'll do, I mean, it wouldn't be me if I didn't plug the amazing work that nonprofits and grassroots organizations do. So regardless if you, you know, help out with my campaign or interact with my campaign in any way, I'd encourage folks, if you're able to and have some free time, to volunteer for a nonprofit or a grassroots group. They do some incredible work in this city, and they really need our support. So if you have the time, please do that.
Okay, for the Q and A part. So I would start with Robert's question. Would you support a reduction of red tape for single-family house owners? Okay. EDI Points Based Green Light System like the one from the mayor from the Bay Area, which is a webinar that we held, Robert from our office held. I don't know if Igor had the chance to, to see it, but I'm not even aware of what red tape of single-family house owners experience. So that would be like from all the list of problems in our city, I wouldn't put single-family houses on top of it. But Igor, do you want to comment on it, or maybe red tape in general, which you kind of covered already?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, I get, like, I'm a big proponent of looking at, you know, what works, what doesn't, and trying to creatively, you know, fix our system and do things in a different way. And so I think if, you know, there are, there is red tape when it comes to, you know, single-family detached housing, I assume you're talking about. I think it's important to look at that and to see what we can sort of change and what we can remove. There's an example of, you know, a colleague of mine who actually presented at a conference recently and talked about his daughter who uses a wheelchair and the inability of him to, you know, pave, and I've told the story before, to pave their driveway to be at grade to allow his daughter to go to access their house, and it's a single-family detached home. And the process of navigating all the bureaucracy, all the policy, all the different forms to be able to do that, and in the end, I think not being able to do it is incredibly telling of where our system is in terms of this sort of like red tape, if you're referring to things like that. So I think in that instance, we really need to look at sort of what, you know, our policies and bylaws look like, and, you know, the reason and rationale for why folks and people with disabilities can't, you know, seek appropriate accommodation when it comes to the places they live, because I don't think that should be happening in our city. And I think we need to, I think we need to have a little bit of compassion and a little bit of flexibility when it comes to some of these rules and regulations that we place, including on single-family detached homes, to allow for these things to happen.
I have a very interesting ques, two questions here, but let's start with this one. Allison's question. Often condo developments go up without community services for the residents, such as parks, community centers, schools, or even food shopping. For example, City Place, what would you do to build services and green space into neighborhoods? Sorry, Igor, I just have to say that City Place is actually an amazing example of a new neighborhood with an amazing community center and two schools right there. And I know, and I, it's, I'm not just saying it, we actually use that every weekend. It's packed and vibrant, and I would like to, you know, City Place, I encourage you, Allison, to, to go there if you haven't in a while, because it is an amazing neighborhood that evolved for sure over decades, but probably not the best example. But Igor, I think that's, you know, not every condo, every new building needs to come with a school and a park, but overall, I would say people definitely feel that there's a, you know, a catch-up to play. And I think as a council, you would definitely have to come up with an explanation.
So I mean, I think it's a really great question, and it's something that I've heard at the door and people talking about in regards to, you know, massive amounts of development happening and the infrastructure and amenities not keeping up with that development. And the case of City Place, I think it took, it was planned for, it just, the way that they rolled out and built out that incredible community center that Nama referred to, and, you know, the field that's currently there and all those outdoor amenities sort of lingered a bit before that took place to, I guess, reach the mass of density that was needed. So yeah, folks needed to wait, and that wasn't there. I think an answer to that question around, you know, what to do about that, I think it's a real conversation that needs to be had in terms of looking at and reflecting on, you know, the case that you brought up with City Place and thinking about other areas of the city and other areas of the ward that had that type of intensification, and thinking about what can be built, you know, sooner rather than later. And I think it also lends itself to an interesting topic, which we, which I sort of highlighted a little bit but didn't get into in depth, which is sort of mainstream vitality and, you know, the other options we have with, you know, the, all the, you know, empty storefronts that we currently have, and how do we look at those empty storefronts and reuse and recycle that space for community uses? It's something that I've written about in a spacing article. It's titled "A Vision for Main Street Recycling Empty Storefronts." And in it, I sort of went through a number of different examples within the city. There's one at Young and Gerard in 2016. There's others, there's other pop-ups that took place, the Daleford East Community Association is another example that really looked at how do you revitalize empty storefronts and bring back sort of life to Main Street. And that includes using it for public uses and, you know, incorporating into the public domain. And it's something actually that Nama is probably aware of. On Queen Street, the St. Patrick's Market, which is right close to Smart Density's office, has sort of, you know, the city has, I think, recently or the last couple of years, repurchased that property, and it certainly currently is sitting vacant. So I think there's opportunities for being really creative in terms of public space and not only looking as a solution to build brand-new everything, but looking at what we already have, and how do we organize or reorganize the assets that the city already has, or assets the private sector has, and it's willing to sort of lend to the public domain to facilitate and animate public space in the way that you're talking about. So I think these creative solutions exist out there, and I think we just need to engage and do the work of, you know, listening and meeting with folks and creating these relationships.
A question by Mark. What, oh, this is a good one. What things have you learned from door-knocking, walking the ward over the last few months that you didn't know before you started?
Oh, that is a really good question. And I think, so I think one of the main things that I've learned is, I think folks really want results as quickly as possible, and they want results for things that affect their day-to-day lives. I think many times in politics, we like to have philosophical conversations, and I think inevitably, the people that have the privilege to have those philosophical conversations seem to be folks in the most highest levels of socioeconomic status, to be able to, you know, have these conversations at such a high level. But I think the folks that I'm meeting door to door, the things that they care about is the things that, you know, affect their lives the next day when they wake up. So, you know, affordable childcare and like getting, you know, getting their children to daycare, you know, the route that they take to work and why the sidewalk is cracked, the garbage dumpster that is never, you know, emptied in front of their, your house that they live in, you know, the transit that they, that never arrives or that is always late or delayed or not in service. So it's these day-to-day things that affect people's lives the most, which I think are the things that I've heard the most about. And I think that's really grounded me in my thinking around how do you Um, and I think that's really grounded in me and my thinking around how do you create impact? Um, and what we can do to change people's lives as quickly as possible tomorrow and not sort of wait and, and have these, uh, philosophical discussions necessarily at City Hall where it's so removed from people's day-to-day lives that it's really hard for people to connect to. So my focus has been sort of reshifting my own thinking and unlearning, um, to balance, uh, and sort of prioritize, uh, the things that cause the greatest concern and difficulty for people every single day. And that is sort of my mission and what I'm trying to focus on in terms of my platform and in terms of the conversations that we're having.
Igor, it's eleven thirty-one and we try to keep our webinars, uh, to thirty minutes. There are more questions. I, um, I, I see the questions in the chat, in the Q and A. Please, uh, I posted Igor's website and you can reach out directly or come and say hi tonight, uh, six till eight P M, right?
Seven to seven to, seven to nine P M.
Seven to nine, so not six to eight, seven to nine. Here, I'm gonna put it, um, the location. Okay, um, Igor, thank you very much. We wish you all the best on October twenty-fourth. Fourth, okay, um, thanks everyone.